Mr. Basil, would you call the board, please?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Martino.
Thank you.
Mr. Basil here and Mrs. Bytes.
Here.
Mr. Doty. Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Ms. Fadowski? Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here. Under announcements, I probably should have done this last meeting, but I'd like to thank Mr. Hurley for his months of service as the acting superintendent. As someone said, he's experienced more different issues in the past four months than some people experience in several years, so, and he's been doing both that job and his own job, so we appreciate it, Mr. Hurley. Thank you.
Absolutely.
An executive session will be held after the voting meeting to discuss several confidential issues, and under agenda edits, remove item 8H, the second donation there because it's a question about the donation, remove item 10B-1C, and revise item 11A. The date on that is actually November 2nd, not October 28th.
10B-1C. 10B. Can you go through that again, Mr. Martino?
Yes, remove item 8H, the second donation, the $483 donation, and remove item 10D-1C, and revise item 11A to the trip being November 2nd, 2015, not October 28th. Are there any other agenda edits? Seeing none, the procedures for public participation are on the inside cover of the blue cover, just to be brief, if you have a comment on the agenda, come to the podium, state your name and address, sign in, and you'll have three minutes to make your comment or ask your questions. Items that aren't on the agenda will be discussed at the end of the meeting. Are there any presentations by the public on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognition for October, to Jacob Canning, Troop 597 Eagle Scout. Jacob, can I come up, please? You can stay out there. I don't want you tripping over these wires here. That says recognition and appreciation, Jacob, for your achievements in Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Can I ask, Mr. Martino, what was your project?
I reconstructed the trail at Sheehan, Illinois.
Moving on to item 8, to the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion for 8A through K.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz on items 8A through K, minus the one agenda edit. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
This will be an honest vote for approval unless you hear any votes of the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 9, financial approvals. I understand we have a brief presentation? Yes, there you go.
About that?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Lou Brudelli with RBC Capital Markets, and I was here back in September in the Financial Committee to talk about the next refinancing opportunity for the school district, and I would just like to give a brief review of that discussion that we had at the Finance Committee. We do have a parameters debt resolution for your consideration this evening to potentially authorize your financing team to proceed and implement this refinancing opportunity. So, just wanted to real quickly highlight, if you look at page two of the handout that's going around, this is the page that summarizes all of the school district's outstanding debt, the principal and interest payments on an annual basis are shown here, and in column four, the 2008 bond issue, many of you will remember that last year at this time, we refinanced a portion of that, and then right at year-end, we refinanced a second portion of it with the 2015 refinancing. So, columns seven and eight were the first refinancings of a portion of the 2008. There was pretty substantial savings for the school district, and what we're here to talk about is taking another piece of the 2004 issue and refinancing it here around year-end. One thing I will just note, since a year from now we'll be able to be talking about column two, is the district's oldest outstanding financing is shown there, the 2007 bonds that were issued through the State Public School Building Authority. That is an issue that we've been tracking and discussing with the business office in terms of a very significant refinancing opportunity, but we have to wait until we get, as I said, to about this time next year to be able to refinance that. That issue has outstanding interest rates of around 5%. If interest rates are available next year, similar to what's available today, there should hopefully be some very substantial savings from that refinancing opportunity. Turn to page three, just a quick summary of what you would be authorizing. Again, it's the 2008 bonds, that there's still about 23 million of those outstanding, and their interest rates range from 4% to 5%, and in the middle section of bullet points, the proposed 2016 issue would advance or fund a portion of those, and it would be bank-qualified. The reason we've been splitting these into $10 million increments is we can get a lower interest rate as long as the issue stays under $10 million per calendar year. So, that's what we did in '14. We got our issue that settled in '15, and now this issue would settle in 2016 to take advantage of your bank-qualified allocation for 2016. Currently, there's about $411,000 of savings to the school district. That is a net number, and if we're actually to do the transaction today, it would probably be just, it would be a little bit higher than that, since we've had interest rates improved just here in the last few days. Our schedule is shown there. Again, I mentioned I was here on September 16th with the Finance Committee. They had recommended to you that you authorize the team to proceed, so your legal counsel is here tonight with the resolution to present, and with your adoption of that, this evening, we would then be prepared to potentially lock in an interest rate in December, closing in January. We did have a discussion at the Finance Committee to not only look at this as potentially issuing new bonds to redo the refinancing, but also look at if there are commercial loans available for a bank loan product. We have been seeing some of the banks be aggressive in that recently, so I have had discussions here in the last two weeks with a couple of banks that seem to be showing some interest, so we'll again be pursuing both of those here as we go through the next couple of weeks, see what type of indications we get from the banks versus where interest rates are in the bond market, and obviously be bringing to you what is best, and we'll obviously be keeping the business office up to date on that progress. The last page, page four, is just a quick update that really not much has changed since I was here in September in terms of interest rates. They've continued to remain low and very attractive. We do have a Federal Reserve meeting that starts tomorrow, and there's an expectation that on Wednesday at 2:00, when they make their announcement, most likely they're not trying to announce any change in interest rate policy. They then meet again in December, and right now, most of the market has changed to expecting any change in rates, potentially an increase, not until their first meeting in 2016, so we'll still have to see on what happens to our rates. The resolution that you do have tonight does authorize, as I described, whether this ends up being a bond issue or a bank loan. It basically is written with the flexibility that we can do either, so with your adoption, we'll still be able to implement whichever one produces the most savings for you. So, I would be happy to answer any questions about the proposed transaction.
Lou, I have one more question then. So, what do you anticipate when we go after our bond rating? Is the state budget, do you even see that having effects on the bond ratings?
That's a very good question, and we just got a list of questions that the business office is going to be expected to address on a credit rating call next week, and that's one of the questions. I was on a rating call about a week and a half ago. The rating analysts are asking the school districts, how is the budget impact impacting you? What reserves do you have? How long will those reserves last? Have you started to think about a contingency plan if there's no budget before year-end and your reserves are expected to run out by December? So, it's a topic that is being addressed on the credit rating calls. We know, I think we talked about it at the Finance Committee, that the Commonwealth's Intercept Program for School District Debt Service Payments was already downgraded by Moody's about a month ago, so the budget impact, impasse is having an impact, obviously, on school districts and their ability to borrow money, but...
So, if we're, say, downgraded from last year's issue, where we, I forget what we were...
Double A clients.
Say, we say we're downgraded by, you know, one level, would that affect the interest rate?
Hopefully, that's not going to happen. I think in the discussions that we've had about your situation, you're pretty well-prepared. We have other school districts that are already had their borrowings in place because they're running out of money right now, so I wouldn't expect that if there was a downgrade by one notch, it probably translates to 10 or 15 basis points that your interest rate would be higher by that amount.
So, I guess my question would be then, once we have everything ready to pull the trigger, say, we are downgraded, but then, speed past the budget, will they be able to act again and review that?
Certainly, the action that Moody's took two weeks ago to downgrade a whole bunch of school districts was based on just a lack of a budget where the state's at, so they took that action, removed from those school districts doing a transaction, so I would expect that if there was some change in the rating later on, that that rating would come right back up. So, I think that's a good point, that that's certainly something we'll be monitoring. I think only in the event that the district's rating was downgraded.
Okay.
Hopeful, because it sounds like everything else is still doing well financially for the district.
That was my question then. So, then, if by chance we are downgraded, then we can keep in line the budget of things, and if it seems that's going to break through, then we can hold off on the issue maybe for...
Right. That's right. Right, yeah. The flexibility and kind of the beauty of why we recommended these parameters to you a year and a half ago was it gives us the flexibility. It's not like we've set a dating stone that we're bringing, we're accessing the market today because we're going to bring it to you tonight. We have that flexibility now to then watch the market, see what's happening, see what's going on with the state budget, and go price the transaction when it's going to be to your best advantage.
Lou, am I correct in my understanding, last year, didn't we pull the credit rating, was it in December, beginning of December, right about when we were going to lock in the rates? Wasn't that when the credit rating was pulled?
When we had it confirmed.
Last year, yeah.
Yes, it would have been right before, typically, we do it right before we access the market, so it was about this time last year.
Okay.
Any other board comments or questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the parameters resolution?
There is a presentation, a short presentation from my counsel. We are in resolution.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amy Tintina. I have a copy of the official resolution to pass out. I promise I'll be brief because Lou has the important information that everybody was interested in hearing about the economic substance of the transaction, but this is the written formal resolution. It is just as Lou had described in authorizing parameters for the issuance of the 2015 bonds up to a maximum amount of $11,720,000. So, we do expect the bond to come in at under $10 million, at or under $10 million, if the transaction bank-qualified. The resolution does specify that the 2016 bond will be, I'm sorry, the 2016 bond, if those who are encouraging, will be authorized in 2015. The proceeds of the bonds, as we've mentioned, will be used to refund a portion of the 2008 notes, which was done last year, so the resolution is in substantially the same form as you saw last year. Does authorize the sale of the bonds to RBC as underwriter or placement agent in order to give you that flexibility of a bank loan instead of coming in to be the better deal. And it does establish the parameters pursuant to which the bonds could be issued, so you do have maximum interest rates, maximal principal payments, and also, as Lou mentioned, the bonds cannot be issued unless you have a savings of at least $200,000 in net cost to issuance. Other than that, the resolution contains the necessary language for IRS purposes and state purposes to enable the approval of proceedings at the state level from the Department of Community and Economic Development, authorizes all the corporate officers of the district to sign off on the bonds and to issue the bonds on behalf of the school district. If you have any specific questions about the resolution or any terms, if you have to go over them.
This is essentially what we saw as part of the board package, right, on Friday? The draft, I mean, was there any changes since Friday to this?
There are not. Yeah, that changed on Friday. It's been substantially the same form for quite a number of weeks. The most recent change we made was to confirm that there was flexibility to go with a bank loan.
Right, okay.
But other than that, it's the same form that you've seen previously.
Maybe it's just my confusion reading the reports, but I'm seeing three different balances referenced regarding that series 2008. On page two, column four, it shows us 35.11, and then on page three, I see a reference to 23.7 outstanding, and now in this resolution, I see 11.7. Is it just my problem with the reports?
No problem. So, on page two, that's showing the principal and interest payments, so the principal and interest payments remaining, and that total at 35 million, and then on page three, at the top there, we're just referencing the total principal amount that's left.
Okay, and then why wouldn't that be the number on the resolution, 11.7?
The $11,720 there is to the maximum principal amount of bonds that can't be issued. In order to get the preferential bank-qualified treatment, the amount that is actually issued will be $10 million or less, but in order to get state approval in advance and make sure that you have the flexibility to issue when you want, you have to add a little bit on there so we can put maximum principal payments for each specific maturity, and then what happens is when the bonds are actually priced, those amounts will be adjusted back.
So, we're only going to be refunding some portion, like 9 billion of those 2008's, so that the new issue stays under 10?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? Thank you.
Motion for 9A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Rathke for the motion to approve the parameters resolution. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Motion for 9A, first by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Rathke. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 10, our personnel...
Just one comment. Can we get this up on the website, then? Okay, thanks.
Item 10, personnel approvals.
Motion for 10A through D as amended.
Second.
Motion for 10A through D as amended by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Rathke. Comments or questions?
Oh, I have a question, please. Will the council payable clerk position be, the old cabinet in the absence or worked around A to A?
Other people filling in.
Okay.
Yep.
No other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
And a motion for 10A through D as amended by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Rathke. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 11, programs.
Motion for 11A and B as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf for 11A and B as amended, second by Mr. Kurtz. Comments or questions?
I'd like to thank the Beth Mickle for her generosity, and I'm just sorry, I'm not really sure who it is. Your mic's not on.
She's a former grad at Daniel Boone, and she's donating that to us.
Thank you, and thanks to her.
Mr. Basil?
Motion 11A and B as amended by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Item 12, our first readings on five policies. Any comments or questions?
Actually, I had one or two small questions. I'm assuming it's Policy 000, Local Board Procedures, page 19 in the board PDF. 19, 20, page 20, my apologies. At the bottom, it says Evaluation of Board Procedures. It says the board shall plan an annual evaluation of its functions as a board, and then behind that, it says the board president who are working with the superintendent shall develop an annual plan. Yeah, I'll get surprised back, but it'll be back in a few minutes. Okay, it just isn't bold. I don't know if that means it's going, it's staying? It was something that was added by the SBA. Yeah. But, you know, the policy certainly reflects something we're doing. If we're not doing it, then we shouldn't have it in our policy.
Will you let me know?
Yeah, it should be spread out. Okay. Name this in our preview. Okay, the only other question I had then was in relation to Policy 107, adoption of textbooks under, that's on page 22 of our board package, under paragraph five, standards for approval, list, you know, A, B, C, D, suitability, maturity level, freedom from bias, relationship to the curriculum, relationship to continuous multi-grade program. I guess the other question I would have, it would seem obvious to me, but maybe it isn't, in terms of just, I don't know whether you're picking textbooks that, I guess it depends on the subject matter, don't have references to current topics. I know editors like to do that so that the books become quickly out of date, you have to purchase a new edition all the time, but perhaps looking at something that's a little bit more universal or standard in terms of the language that's used, so there isn't references to something that's current day, that somebody would say, well, you know, this information is no longer applicable because X, Y, Z has changed, but if the content of the subject matter is relevant, then it would seem ridiculous to go out and be, you know, purchasing a new edition just because it's referencing, you know, I don't know what it could be, you know, the 2016 presidential election as opposed to something else, elections in general. Do you follow what I'm saying with that?
Yeah.
I don't know if there needs to be a criteria here, or if that's something you guys look at while you're looking at books?
I think that's something...
Maybe adding that to a policy would remind people going forward, that that's something you'd be looking at?
Well, maybe, Mrs. Basil, can you weigh in on this?
Before, okay. I turned mine off to trade.
Okay, well, before this is given, I'll just mention, we talked about this when we presented this curriculum committee meeting, and they, administrations coming up with the plans, determine, well, we've already figured out what we have, which was a crucial dissing link. We can't talk about what we need unless we know what we have. So, they figured that out, and they're coming up with a priority of books that need to be replaced, what needs to be changed, and set a criteria for determining that. So, it doesn't seem like the administration is tuned into this issue now, and they are going through, making a procedure they're willing to implement. It's in terms of specific language, including policy, there are suggestions behind the Speaker of the Policy Committee, but this is something they're looking at, curriculum, the administration is coming up with a plan. So, this type of situation has a resolution before it comes up to a certain level. If that helps, Mrs. Basil, if you can answer your question, or if that, if you appreciate that.
Are those criteria going to be formulated, some sort of administrative guideline going forward, or is it just some sort of notes that somebody's holding on to? Well, I guess what I'm trying to get to is, I've been around long enough to see that personnel changes and things get forgotten, and so what we want to do is institutionalize a process that we think is a good one, so that the culture continues to perpetuate that end result, right, long after all of us have moved on to other things, and so we just want to make sure. That's my concern, and that's the reason why you typically put in a policy, because somebody says, well, gee, I'm new to the board, I'm new to the administration, what does the policy say? You open up the policy and there it is, or the administrative guideline and there it is. It's not some sort of criteria that one administrator came up with, and it's sitting in somebody's desk, and then it gets lost somewhere, and somebody else comes up with a better idea.
Yes, we are working on a very thorough process, and it does include some documentation that I have shared with the board, and I'm sure you've had a chance to see.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
It does ask a lot of questions and consider the criteria that you mentioned.
And to answer your question, the long-term plan is to get that in our administrative guidelines, so it lasts beyond any of us to the next group of administrators that eventually come in.
In terms of your specific point, though, it's well taken. I think once we get that policy, that process, excuse me, figure out what to implement, policy, I think that might not be a bad move, but again, we need to figure out what that will be. So, I guess it's a question of, for the board, which one needs to have the first. Figure out the process, and then write the policy, try to figure out the policy without really understanding the direction we should go along the process. But I think that would be good to have it formally established, because I mentioned this during the curriculum committee meeting, it's disappointing that this had to come from that committee, ask the questions about the textbooks that we have, and their ages, and the content of them, because this is something that we should always be tuned into, when it needs to work its way up to the board, because we didn't know about it, and that's rolled our administration and working all twelve way down. So, they are very much aware, but I do think, that's my personal view, we can put the policy that's, and other people will go.
I mean, I don't think we have an issue of folks being updated too much. So, I mean, I get your point. I mean, I know, you know, authors may just, might need to change some things to put out a new issue to... to put out a new issue to get new sales. Obviously, that would be something that we would not want to subscribe to, but obviously, current effects of books, you know, obviously, new change, and theories, and, and science, something that are changing, obviously, we want to update for that. But, uh, you know, I, I don't want to take for granted, but I would, I would take that administration would not just update a book just to, uh, it's easy change, that the teacher can certainly just point out. If it's a couple of changes to, to a presidential election, you know, the teacher obviously goes to point that out, instead of buying a whole new, uh, whole new edition. But, uh, yeah, I don't think we have the issue right now, so.
No, I just think that, you know, we're going to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on books, right? I can't see Mr. Rathke, I saved my budget. We're going to go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on books, and clearly you want something that's going to be universal, it's good. Math is math, science, some fundamentals don't change, economics is pretty basic, but if, if everything being referenced in the book is the current events, well, it dates that book within a year, two years, three years. Some people are like, hey, you know, this book is referring to things that are, that are long past, say. And I don't just want to be in a situation where spending hundreds of thousands of dollars when the content, the actual academic learning piece hasn't changed, hasn't fundamentally changed.
And that's because the Board's role in approving texts as well. It's up to everybody, including the people at the end of the day who make that vote, to determine that we are purchasing the textbook set in many ways, and as many ways as possible we be timed this. And to avoid the pitfalls that Mr. Basil was mentioning. But the administration, like we review texts, is aware of the necessity of trying to make sure that we're not being, uh, put with, I guess, by the textbook company, because they really are.
Okay.
It's a cartel all, it's a tour, but they control the entire market. So any of the poor and the money people out there, it's a great opportunity to shake that up, but.
Just for everyone's benefit, if you hadn't had a chance to read it, this is Keith's all-recommended two date changes of, I think, recommendations and protocol backing amounts of standards. And the next round of PSBA review of policies will be this 100 series, so we're going to be talking about this again, whenever it is they decide they're going to do our next round. So we'll have an opportunity to go through and discuss it, and incorporate any improvements or suggestions by the administration.
Just before we leave the subject of these readings, almost, uh, under, as page 14, I also noticed in the board packet, page two of Policy 000, I guess. Rules of Construction, number one, says that neither the Board nor the administration intends a result that is absurd, impossible of execution, or unreasonable. I'm not sure if impossible of execution is grammatically correct, maybe impossible to execute, um, just a thought. And then perhaps also some sort of statement regarding a conflict between policies, Mr. Suber, that if one policy says one thing, another policy seems to contradict that somewhere. Do we have a statement of contradiction somewhere in our? I, I just don't know, maybe you throw some sort of line in there that one prevails over the other, or it comes down to Board discretion, or?
I'll have to repeat the policy for that specific issue, but my recommendation would be that the Board will reserve the discretion to resolve any conflict between the same policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's written down somewhere, so I just want to make sure that we capture that. Well, that, sometimes on individual policies, it says things are up to Board discretion, but overall, in as a conflict between policies, I'm not sure I remember that being outlined somewhere. That's all I have.
If there is a conflict between policies, wouldn't it make sense to change one of the policies?
It would, but you may not be aware of that conflict until it happens, right? There's a lot of policies.
Other comments or questions? Moving on to item 13, is there any old business? Seeing none, we actually have an agenda edit because we forgot to put new business on here. Is there any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to Presentations by the Public on Issues.
Eric Chalk, 2032, Spade Street, Delphso. Boy, really does, really amaze me, though, you know. I know I complained about that newsletter, uh, of course, but it's just one media, all that fancy color and everything. And, you know, I mean, what should I say, newsletter, or political brochure? I mean, a newsletter like that normally comes out after the reorientation meeting, January. But it's amazing how you all just put that right out there for us to see, two weeks before, nine, six out of nine, just giving it off. That, that was a really good political, and I hope the taxpayers really enjoyed paying for that. Make you all see how much you enjoyed next Tuesday, how much you enjoyed that. And I think now, on your website, I saw advertisements for an assistant to the building ground supervisor. Now, we're paying $16,000 to do a study to close these buildings. Now, we're closing buildings, we're going to have less buildings, we're going to have more supervisors to, to supervise these buildings. This doesn't make sense. We had building ground supervisor a couple of years ago, we left him go because we couldn't afford him. I guess we can afford everything. Now we can afford newsletters, for brochure, for political brochure, afford all kinds of stuff. Is this what we're going here? We're just squandering our money away? That's the question.
Oh, is that a question?
Yes, it's a question.
Now we help you respond, or you want to, thanks.
Why could you do? Because if you're going to, if you're going to give assistance to, to people that, I mean, we shouldn't have it, uh, being doing this, we got better than last time, we shouldn't have it now. We're closing buildings, and we're putting more, more supervision in. It's ridiculous. I mean, I mean, the key point you're fitting is that the other Board has spent so much money in that state of keep it up, you'll be right up there in the same tally as they are. You waste your money, waste all the taxpayer money, possibly.
My recollection-
I can see why these, these teachers want, don't want to settle the contract. They see all the money thrown around here, they should have it too.
Thank you.
I hope they strike.
Well, my recollection, Mr. Templeton, is that the, that position, um, has been open because that person had left the school district, and it's in the budget to fill. So it's not like, um, we hadn't set aside the money to find someone to help our facility-
So we carry, is that money for something else, just so it's there, or we have to spend it?
No, there's a need-
No, that's exactly why.
Well, if you've been coming to the Facilities Committee meetings, you understand that there's a need here for that type of skill set to assist our current personnel with the facilities that we currently have. We have about $120 million worth of real estate here that needs attention on a constant basis, and we're struggling with the manpower that we have to keep up with it. I would think that the taxpayers of the school district would want us to take care of that kind of investment to make sure that those components and capital expenditures are being maintained properly.
Yes, hiring the people that take care of it, not supervision that sits behind them. $35,000, $1,000 truck, and it actually does a project, no. This is what you need, hire, hire people that are going to-
Mr. Templeton, if you would like to come up for the microphone again, that's fine, but I'm responding to your question. None of the people that we have in our facilities sit behind a desk all day, all of them work. They work in the buildings, they work on the equipment, and they work to clear the snow in our, in our school district on a regular basis, so all of them are working. Thank you.
All the issues we've done without, we don't need to know on that.
Hi. Diane Holby, 225 dollar on the drive. Our school website has a lot of important information. I wanted to let you know, since it's under the Board dropdown menu, that one of the polling places for next Tuesday is incorrect. I have the first county board elections website, and it's actually my polling place, and it's been for a year, St. Holmes and my methods church, so I appreciate if you change that, because it's incorrect information now, because it's with the correct address.
What does the website say?
Your website says Union something or other, that I think you meant the Grange in Geiger Town, and that hasn't been a polling place for a year. So what your website, if you could include the correct polling precinct, as I started on the website that I took from yesterday, I appreciate it.
That she's correct, it changed, I think it was, uh-
A year ago.
Last year, yeah, it changed, yep. Thank you. No, in the church.
I actually did have plans to speak tonight, but, um, I wanted to comment, thank you for your, your comments, Mr. Templeton. Although there has been some perception out there that the Indian Teachers Association does not wish to settle a contract, and I just wanted to clear that up for the public, that there is this perception out there that we don't want to settle a contract, and that we're, we're taking a long time. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that we've only been, as status, closed since August, and it would be highly unlikely for any contract to be settled in a two-month time period. So, um, while we're not dragging our feet, I think two months would be overly eager for, I think, virtually any school district. So I just wanted to clear that up for the sake of the public. Thank you very much.
I just have a quick question about one of the agenda items. Shameller, 600 inch drive, Delphso. You struck 10B, C, because the director of athletics, as an unpaid fee, but we approved having an acting athletic director. Do we have two 80s acting now, or just?
No, this is an issue we need to discuss after the meeting and executive session, so that's why, that's why I was stricken from the-
Okay. Just wondering who was official.
Huh? For, for the public's sake, Mr. Templeton, the official acting athletic director, what's his name?
George Schmidt.
We're not double paying at this point, at this point.
No, we're not.
Thank you.
Other presentations by the public.
Jennifer Pope, 523, 80. I actually wanted to speak from them, because I did receive a newsletter at my home this past weekend. It was very discouraging to not be able to read about my former students and the other residents in the community, but rather to learn things I already knew about you, because none of you are new to the Board. So that was very discouraging to learn things that really were very irrelevant, other than your recent elections. Some of you were trying to reelect yourselves, which is actually fine. It was discouraging to hear some of it talking about, oh, how much you care about the children, but some of you don't have children that attend here, so that does also concern me about how much you care about what happens to our children, and I also have a child in the district. But I'm actually going to turn it over to our students, and let them have an opportunity to speak.
Hello, Lucy, my record, 205, 30 drive, Delphso. Well, thank you for having us here tonight, and giving us the opportunity to speak to all of you. We very much appreciate it. Students were just concerned when we received this newsletter in the mail, for obviously a couple of reasons. First off, the Blazing Trails newsletter that we used to receive through the online website, it wasn't, didn't cost printing materials and things like that. One of our biggest concerns was we used to be able to write those articles that were sent out to our families, and to our parents, and to all of you, so you could see kind of what we were doing in the high school, in the middle school. Basically, journalists from our Blazer newspaper would send in articles that we had published in our own paper, and we were able to see them all around. And we're kind of, one of our questions would be, are we glad to still have these opportunities? Um, obviously, another concern was, a lot of it did seem a little bit like campaign materials, and I don't want to accuse anyone of anything, but it's a kind of concerning thing when you are an 18-year-old who is going to be voting for the first time on the election on November 3rd, and your school board that is supposed to support you, and their constituents as taxpayers, which are also you, are sending out materials that are all about themselves. As a student at Daniel Boone, I'd really like to be able to see my friends who won scholarships through the PSAT, and students who have done incredible things in athletics and music. We said that this leading children get into district course, which is amazing, and we didn't hear anything about that. Um, the front page of the Blazer, Blazing Trails last year was about the homecoming court and the homecoming football game, and there was not a single aspect of any of that in our current newsletter. Um, so is there an opportunity for us to continue to write for, um, our entire district? And sorry to interrupt you, can I answer that question, please?
I'll, I'll be happy to answer your question. I don't think the Board has made any decisions regarding the students' opportunity to write Blazing Trails whatsoever. That's something I think is done at the high school level, and, um, whatever's being done and being published by the students is still being published by the students.
No, it's not.
Well, it's up to, it's up to the administration, and the teachers, and students to get organized and put this type of literature out there. I can tell you that the Board has not kiboshed those things, and so you have an opportunity to continue to contribute. The newsletter that went out from the school district was to all constituents in the school district, not just to parents, and not just to students, and not just to administrators and those people. We found that over the years, the, um, and this is some, this is a subject that we talked about at Revenue Enhancement Committee and other committee levels for, for six, seven years now. It's never been implemented. And one of the things we were trying to do is how do we get, do a better job as a school district, getting the message out about what the school board is doing to the entire community, all those people who pay the taxes to the school district, who have questions about how their money is being spent and what is being done, uh, at the school level. And I would disagree with the notion that students weren't mentioned. I think we highlighted a lot of the students and activity successes that were, um, in the last 12 months that were realized, here we have live students who went on to receive some academic scholarships at universities. We talked about the Green Team success, we talked about turn academic achievement, we talked about how we're trying to reallocate resources to provide more, um, AP classes at the high school, and we talked about lots of successes of not just this Board, but many Boards in the past have been able to implement over the last six, seven years. Some of that information goes back several, several years, and through more than just the people that are sitting on this Board, but many Boards, those are all over here.
As I recall, there's half a page about student successes, so thank you for that half a page, we did appreciate that. Um, but the, um, the Blazer newspaper is separate from the Blazing Trails. The Blazing Trails used to be sent out by the school district, included all of the schools. Also, um, it just, it was all about the school board, which I appreciate our taxpayers do want to know what you're doing. They also want to know what we, the students, what their tax dollars are going to. They're going to us, they're going to support us in our educational opportunities and the things that we're going to do. So it would be very much appreciated from the entire student body that they learn what we're doing. They hear more about the incredible things that the students are doing. Half a page just really isn't enough. I appreciate learning about every, either bio for all of you, and that was very appreciative, but maybe bio for every class president in this high school, or extremely involved children at the, in the middle school.
Ma'am, ma'am, your time is long overdue, and let me just say this.
Thank you.
The intent is that-
Come on.
The intent is that there will be three newsletters per year, probably one in each trimester. The Board, in conjunction with the administration, will determine the content. I don't know what else to add.
Well, and also I think the other interesting thing is, we're trying to do is model what other school districts are doing. True Affair Easttown School District puts out a newsletter, I think, once a quarter. Uh, they talk about budget, they talk about, um, contract negotiations, they talk about administrative issues, and it's more, it's, it's less student-centric and more district-centric. And that's exactly what we're trying to model, because those types of things aren't discussed in the paper, they're not discussed on our website, they're not communicated in any, in any fashion, really, to the, to the business owners and the taxpayers of the school district. So what we're doing is no different than what other school districts are doing, and we see this as an opportunity to communicate more effectively with the public. We have a meeting, talking about the budget, we do a presentation, and the only ones present typically are maybe 200 people. That's not the entire community, that could be because the entire community can't show up to those types of meetings, they don't have the opportunity to, they're not aware of it. But what we put out, there's no difference to what townships put out there. I get the Amity Township newsletter, I get the Union Township newsletter, I get the True Affair Easttown School District newsletter, I get the ONG Roberts School District newsletter, and those things aren't out there, and they're not very student-centric or, or individual student-centric. It's about what the administrations and the municipal organizations are doing with the taxpayer dollars. So hopefully that answers your question.
I think it was just the time we were concerned about the election being over there, but thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add one word about a bit of data from Point 2 Homes. There are 13,000 total households in the Danahue Mary's School District, 4,700 of which have children. So the vast majority, 85, 77, have new children now, so they're never engaged in any of these discussions. So they're never engaged in any of these discussions, they're not getting any updates from school, they're not seeing any of our, they're not even visiting the website, where we are doing a better job of communicating. So I think the newsletter, which was a long time in the process, I can say that, we gave it engineer a release date for November, we started the process probably close to a year ago. And it was an attempt to reach out to all the households, the underserved households in the community that have no children, as I say, 8577 of them. Thank you.
So my name is Bucky Scott, I'm in 413 Army Lane in Douglasville. Real quickly, I guess, I guess it's the last meeting I was here, I was sitting back here behind Mr. Basil here, and I was, the question came up about textbooks. I'm just going to make this real brief, but the textbooks, and we'd have your money for textbooks. And then, of course, we get the famous newsletter, which, again, as she said, as you cut her off, is, it was really political. I mean, there was no question about it. I tried to reach the board, I tried to reach the schools in the last few days, no one's returning phone calls, which is pretty convenient, and anyway, I just thought as a citizen, and I have six kids that are in this school district, it just was amazing timing that you would send this out. And I know some of you, and I'm just really surprised and disappointed. If it came out two weeks from now, I don't even agree bringing it out. But the fact that here it is, just a few days before the election, it's tooting your own horns, was disappointing. You know, I just saw you roll your eyes at the last speech you did, you spoke and rolled your eyes at her. And I just, maybe you should take us a little bit seriously, as taxpayers, just as parents, it's just that simple. So that's all, it's just really, that's all I had to say. But I was disappointed, I mean, I know you're running for election right now, Mr. Basil, so for you speaking on behalf of the newsletter was kind of disappointing, it should be other people here talking about, maybe Mr. Martin, you know, here, we could talk to him about the newsletter yourself.
I am not up for reelection.
I know, it doesn't matter, that's what I'm saying.
But I will say, to correct one thing you said, I don't remember anybody saying that there's no money for textbooks. I don't know of any textbooks that have been presented to the board for approval that we've disapproved.
Okay, so I'll be careful what I say, but the last time I was sitting over this way, we were discussing about him textbooks, and I think you were looking at Amazon, that just the point, that we have money now, all of a sudden, to send them mailing out, which I understand somewhere in the $4,000 range, when we have other necessities in this school district. It just has to, I see I've got the yellow light from District War over there, so I'll go, but I just wanted to make that a point, it just disappoints.
I'd like to apologize for rolling my eyes, I, sometimes it's inadvertent, and I, it wasn't a conscious decision, I respect you coming up to the podium, as a student who uses them up to the podium, and I'm sorry for any offense caused, and I'll try to better than that.
I just want to make a quick comment. Eight years ago, I remember coming to board meetings where the public wasn't given any opportunity to speak at all, or if they were given an opportunity to speak, they were not only cut off, but the meeting was called, so closed, so the people could not continue to speak. And Mr. Templin, I was there with you, and this would happen all the time.
Thirty-seven years I've been coming to these board meetings, and 37 years Mr. Templin was able to speak, don't tell me there's no.
That's not what would happen, I've sat there, plenty of meetings.
Thirty-seven years coming to.
Mr. Templin. Basil, finish what you're saying, thank you.
I've been at plenty of meetings where the public was not allowed to speak, or their time was limited, and the meeting would be closed. And not everyone had an opportunity to get up to the microphone, and I can tell you, I've sat here and allowed every single person and one to have something to say, get up to the microphone, and have the opportunity to say it, and to the point where we'd be at meetings until 12:30, 1 o'clock at night. We have minutes that are now being recorded, and being published to the website. We have more information on our website than at any time in the last decade. There's more transparency about what the board is doing, and how they're doing it, than ever before. And so I do take what the public has to say very seriously, Mr. Scott, and it's something that we've been, I've certainly been advocating for ever since I've been on this board, that the public should have a voice in the proceedings that take place in front of the board and with the board. And we do listen to what you're saying, I take notes at every single meeting, who came up to the microphone, what they had to say, if there's questions, are those questions being answered and followed up with? I've been doing it for eight years, I've got notepads filled with comments from members of the public. So I appreciate you coming to the microphone and voicing your concerns, and I wanted to just let you know that they're duly noted, and we take note of those things and record them, and act on them.
This is a question regarding the newsletter, what was exactly the total expense? Because $4,000 does not include postage and delivery of newsletters.
There, there's been a creative information request submitted to the business office, they're compiling that response, and it'll be responded to in the proper timeframe, I'm not sure the exact total cost.
Okay, thank you.
Wendy's Suite, 1856, Bolt Street Road. I'm just going to say I'm happy, because sometimes we're happy in life, and there are good things going on in the district, and we have some awesome administrators in the district. And Wednesday night, anybody who's interested, we have an awesome opportunity to see some incredible things that not just our high school students are doing, but our high school is crazy enough to open the building to allow us to do, no idea what it looks like, what it's done, but we have middle school and elementary schools all involved in, say, trick or treat night. Awesome opportunity, again, the newsletter, maybe next year, it'd be a really nice thing to put a little word in there to reach all the community members, grandparents in the communities, to bring out their trick or treaters, see some of their tax dollars in the faces of the teachers that are out there on their own time, give them candy, build the decorations with the kids, and invite all the board members to come through, I'm sure you'll get some good candy, we do have some chocolates, some of us advisors bring out, but just a happy, there are good things, and it's awesome, because this is grown, and I'm so sorry, just like that, it exploded this year for you, but it is growing, and we are getting elementary and middle school clubs up in there, because the administrators there are just awesome. So just a happy, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm just going to say, that was something the board used to participate in, I remember going up there and manning a door, we had a stop up there, and I thought it was fun, I don't know why, you know, the board sort of walked away from it over the years, but it was something that the board used to do, is get involved in the safe trick or treat night.
Were you in costume?
I was in costume.
Hi, my name's Susan Clark, 203, Wendy's Suite. I want to know who provides a safe trick or treat night.
I'm sorry.
Who provides a safe trick or treat night at the high school?
How can I answer that question? The Stanford Education Association competes without a benefit, thank you for asking.
Not the board.
Not the school board, not the school district, teachers. And the advisors certainly help, all the different clubs raise candy, but it's sponsored and penned by the Stanford Education Association. Okay, thank you, you're welcome.